Okay, everybody get a chance to go over the minutes? And if so, can I get a motion to approve? Or if there's any corrections that need to be made?
Motion approved.
Thank you. First and second, is any discussion? Can we vote?
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tell?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Minutes are approved as written. Um, are there any additions to the agenda?
Oh, we have one deletion of 10D.
We just changed it to air parts.
So 10D is a deletion?
Yeah.
I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Will you vote?
Tell?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Agenda is approved. As modified. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment, anybody from the public want to comment on anything that is not on the agenda Public hearing is scheduled for forty-five, right? Okay. Um, we'll move on to department head reports, come back to the public hearing at seven forty-five. Who'd like to go first? There we go. You got to take her.
All right, well, we have good news because we're having our open house, um, on Thursday, November seventh, from four to six. We'll have some light refreshments. Hopefully, everybody can come. If not, um, feel free to stop by sometime and one of us will be happy to show you around. Um, we've got an ad going in the paper this week, we've got it on Facebook, so hopefully we'll get a nice turnout. Um, most of our furniture is in place now, so it's really starting to come together and look nice. Just wanted to say thanks to Jeff for helping carry all those chairs in for me. And, um, Lydell has done a lot of extra work, too, so we really appreciate that. Um, we've got to have a couple of events down there so far, and it has been amazing, um, to be able to set up in advance and, uh, not have to move all the furniture beforehand. So, um, we have really enjoyed it so far and looking forward to using it more.
So your event, that's a, uh, a no-cost event, is that correct? You get all your renovations done down there? You got your HVAC is all done now?
Everything's done, yeah. Just putting the last, you know, finishing touches, getting the screen hung up and that sort of thing, but it'll all get done, so.
Well, I know you're just thrilled to death to even have a-
Yes, we are.
...space, that's awesome. Anybody got any questions?
Keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks, Phil. Tam?
So, September sales were forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, they were forty-six oh eighty-three. Um, January to September of eighteen, total sales that far were four thirty-nine, I'm sorry, four thousand, three hundred, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. Sales in two thousand and nineteen to that same period are five hundred and one thousand, oh forty. Um, so we had like a forty, or a sixty-four thousand dollar increase in sales over eighteen for that period. Um, I've contacted a company to give us a bid on our new sign on the highway, um, looking for a second company to compare that with. Continued communication is going on with Mike Peterings, who will be constructing the counters for the new liquor store. The equipment for our POS came in today, which was the twenty-eighth when I did this. Um, or a few days when I did this. We're scheduled to start training on the new system tomorrow and Wednesday. The liquor store donated fifty dollars to the fire department on behalf of the customers who donated for the event. And we're planning to do a fall tasting event on November fifteenth. And as always, if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, please let us know. Any questions? Fifteenth, yeah.
Have you been able to find a second company for the-
I have not yet.
...to be the quote from?
I, um, first of all, I had to wait, we kind of waited for that guy so that he could give us like exact measurements, you know, so that he knew what to do with the sign guy.
Yeah.
But-
Compare apples to apples.
Yeah, so that we can compare them. Um, right now, we're doing all this pre-stuff for the guy to come and fix our POS, I mean, to do the POS switch tomorrow, so.
So is that that company like the same one that did, you know, like either the Family Dollar?
Um, no, the guy that came to give us a quote and came out and looked at the sign was from, um, the guy who did, uh, I just lost it, drew the lighting.
Oh, okay.
That's who put his, did his sign. And does like some different graphics for him, too, he said, so.
So to get a second one, I wonder if the Dollar General or somebody like that.
See, and I tried to ask Louis where their sign, and she said it came from Louis, and she never got back to me. And then I called like John Deere, and theirs comes right from corporate. So then I kind of just started going online and was gonna pick some out of online and just see, just to get an estimate, you know, is what my intentions were there. But yeah, I tried like John's Drug, I tried like John Deere, not John Lewis, I'm sorry.
Did you call the Lakefield meeting?
You know what, I did not call her yet.
Because they got one about a year ago, so that may be one place to check. It might be the same guy, who knows?
Who knows, but, yeah, let me, I'll, you know, write that on here.
Marshall just got there, it's not too long ago, too, didn't it? Couple of years?
C and B and Louis Drug.
Or is it different type?
They both have theirs, I think, at the same company, and I have that guy's contact in.
Oh, you do? Really? Because the guy from John Deere couldn't tell, he didn't know either.
And, yeah, I get the permits, so.
Oh, permit, oh, perfect. So, you know world, isn't it? Yeah, perfect, let me know who they are, and we can ask them, too, yeah, definitely. Might as well get opinions, just to see. And people that way can give us their, you know, ideas of, yeah, perfect. I'll write that on here, Shane, you got their numbers?
Just come find me.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody got any further questions or anything for Tam? Thank you.
I'll take any questions yet on the activity report, but I don't really have anything to add to it.
Please make foreign.
How's our newest officer doing?
I don't have anything else, I don't suppose, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Since Dave took my question.
I was gonna try to time this for the, for the, uh-
Can you do it in six minutes?
Well, yeah, it's gonna not take me that long, so then I'll come back up for the special use permit request. Um, what you got in your packet in front of you would be the changes that were made to the revolving loan funds, the, uh, the way we do the loans, what the requirements are. Thank you, we've all seen those. Uh, some of the things that were put in there was just rewording a few, adding a few things, but then we rewarded some things to, uh, um, make it a little bit more convenient for the, the EDA. So if you got any questions on that, please, uh, please let me know. Um, the next thing I've, I've got for you would be the enabling resolution to establish economic development. I realize, well, the League of Minnesota Cities actually told me that this is supposed to be announced to you once a year, that there wasn't going to be any changes with that this year. So I'll be on that from now on. I, I had no idea that it was, I talked to Matt Gross about it, and then he said, yeah, that's something that's supposed to be announced if you're making any changes to the, to the bylaws or to the, uh, the initial resolution that came up in, well, nineteen eighty-seven. So we're taking a look at those right now, but there, there was, as of right now, there's not going to be any changes with it, so I had to announce that to, to the, to the board. Um, one of the things that, that I wanted to make sure I got out right away would be the, um, I'm taking a lot of calls right now for, uh, the upcoming small cities grant, so that's going to be coming around. No one is late, no one is, uh, behind. I hope as many people apply for it as I get phone calls about it. So I'm hoping, uh, um, so, but it's, 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 it's all going along smoothly. We've got the next round of paperwork done that was posted, and it's just a matter of time that we're gonna have the application process that's gonna be coming up. But there's nothing new with it right now, it's a slow process. So there's, there's, I will, I will make sure that it is in the newspaper a couple times, it'll be on the TV roll, and then it'll also be out there possibly even in a, a door-to-door type of thing is, is what Ucap would like to do possibly, so. Um, besides that, we've got Broad Acres, finally, I can announce that, uh, the, um, the cement's being poured this week, all the, uh, the excavators and everything are out there, so finally, 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 three months late, but we are, uh, we are moving out there, so that's, uh, that's very important. But the rest of it, besides the wrong dates on the top, is, if there's any questions from anybody on anything? Four minutes, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. That leaves you.
Do we get a chance to read the report that I sent out? Answer any questions on that, otherwise, um, we have been working on the repairs on Front Street. We're replacing the road base there, there's about four or five inches of asphalt there, and then, uh, maybe three inches of gravel under it, and that's swamp mud under that, so, um, we're digging down, we're gonna put a road fabric in there, um, geotextile fabric, and then, uh, eight inches of gravel base. And then, um, when Dummix paves the rest of this project here, this wall, we're gonna have him pave that, too, so that's in the works, and then, um-
That's the, uh, the tile issue, is that what that is?
Yeah.
So have you talked to the county, or are they gonna-
They haven't. They don't show any interest in getting it done anytime soon, so we need to get the road fixed before winter, so it's gonna be on them to do whatever they're gonna do later. They can, based on their discussion, we can put a T in that line prior to where we dug up, so we wouldn't have to affect what we just fixed, we can move it to a different area, so, um, it really isn't a, a big deal, but with, uh, the watershed committees and everything involved, it's not gonna be a very quick process with- It's really not county-owned, it's owned by all the, the watershed district, but it's, everything is, the administrator is the county, but technically, they're not the owners, so.
Are they gonna help pay for the repair?
I was gonna say, putting in that T, that, the cost, who's doing that?
This would be a FEMA project.
Okay.
So, did whoever kind of pushing it, get it done yet this year, so we can close that up in the books?
All right.
Um, there's a few other spots, um, we just, I just met with FEMA, um, a few areas have been painted, uh, where there's some frost boils, um, some have been repaired, um, some are next-year digs, but the ones for next year, I mean, the pavement is cracked, but it's not torn up, with clay popping out like Front Street was, where there was a mud hole, so we're gonna let that go until next year, um, just for timing purposes. Um, and I can touch on the street project, um, we had a meeting today, um, with USDA and, uh-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you right there. And I got forty-five. So we'll come back to that, um. We'll open the public hearing for special use permit request to allow for daycare, preschool, and the CBD.
Any questions on what the special use permit's for? The only questions that we had were who filled it out? Would it be the owners of the building, or would it be the people that are gonna occupy the building needing the special use? So I got that, we got that figured out, got it paid, and so, any questions with that?
I don't have any, we've-
Again, like, a lot of things that are on that list were all, I mean, it just skirted around, you know, you know, daycare, school, you know, I think trade school was on there, other things like that, so this'll-
I did get one call today on that, um, and I did call her back and leave her a voicemail, but, um, Tracy Lanes was worried about if there's any distance with a liquor license for, and I did not find anything on the, on the ordinance, um, other than the, like, an on-sale, like, bar, you know, setting, so I think they're finding their bar distance from a child care facility with alcohol, so. Other than that, they, that was their only concern.
And I would think the hours would kind of be offset for when daycare's open to in the bowling alley and so forth.
There's a certain amount of things that can't be next to a library or, and things like that, though, so it's, it's, it's a good question, but I'm glad you looked into it, because I wouldn't have thought that would have been an issue at all, so.
We're all good with that, then.
So more timeframes coming on that, that later. Also, going into that building would be the, uh, eventually is going to be in the, the front of it, it's gonna be the, the law firm that's bringing their facility, or their, their services to that building is gonna be in there also, eventually. Okay, any questions?
Oh, thank you. Anybody else have any input? Okay, so we'll, we'll close-
One more question.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
You like being a drunk.
We can do that. State your name, please.
Jeff Meyer, I represent Tracy United Methodist Church. We'd been here last time, two weeks ago, and asked about that, we were just wondering what was happening with it, because we didn't get the memo like you guys got, so.
There still isn't a-
Still isn't a formal-
-from them on who was gonna pay for it, and who was gonna pay for the permit or anything like that. They are going into there, but they're dealing right now with the new owners of that building, and they just asked for-
No, that's fine, we don't, I'm just asking what's going on.
And I stood-
Because, because like I say, we had called, left a message with the people that we had talked with before, and had gotten no response, and no response here either, so it's like we're-
And now they're getting a lot of response from, from the owners of the building, between the two of them.
Cool.
I think, Jeff, it's not really, as, we're, we're granting the special use, but I think it's between you and that Head Start business, as to if they're gonna-
Yep, and that, and that, and that's perfect and fine, I, I mean, we just kind of want to know where we're at, you know?
And, and we don't-
And you don't know either, so that's fine, so.
No, that's, that's beyond our-
We're good.
...day, too.
Apparently, it's beyond mine, yeah, because we don't get a call back even. So, I mean, I don't, like I say, I don't, if, if Jeff has talked to them, that's great, you know, or whatever, but we just, we're just kind of hanging out here because we-
I would just, we'd reach out to him, Jeff, because they reached out to you, I mean, it's, I would think, just keep reaching.
As a courtesy, I would think they would get back to us, but I, that's up to them, I, I don't, not my deal. So, that, that's why we're here asking questions, I guess, that's all. Because our understanding was ours was already, the facility where we're at, where we were, was at, at that location, is already approved for daycare. That's our understanding of what's going on. And that was what they had said, too, they said, oh, yeah, we're ready to go, no problem.
And you are right.
I, exact, I mean, if they want to move into the other building, that's fine, I don't, I don't, that's not our, because that's their wish is to do that, but to me, if public monies have been used for that, they should be upfront what's going on with us. If they're gonna spend ten times the amount to go into there, there's what's going on, I mean, that, that's where we're at. And that's where I get people from the congregation that are asking, you know, why is this not started yet, what's going on, so, and we don't get an answer.
Tell the people from your congregation the contact information.
Well, I can, we can pass that along, that's fine, but like I say, we're just interested in what's going on with that. So I, that's fine. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, then, at this time, we will, uh, we will close the public hearing for the special use permit request. We will go back to Shane.
Or to, to grant the special use?
To grant the special, right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion or questions? We vote?
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Tell?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Special use permit is granted. Now we're back to Shane.
All right, so I just want to give you an update on the street project, um, Phase Three A that's going on right now, or Three A one, I should say. They plan on having all the pipe underground work done by the end of the week, this week, and then, uh, they plan on having a grading crew start this week, and then through next week, and then paving the following week, so that's kind of their plan so far, um, as of today, so, weather permitting, of course, but. If there are any other questions in the report, or-
When do you anticipate Front Street being opened back up, or?
We plan on, we're trying to get it opened up so we can get some traffic on it prior to paving, to getting it paved, so, um, if all goes right by the end of the week, it should be pretty close, so.
Okay. Anybody get anything else for Shane?
Just, where are we on any of the other, the old FEMA stuff? Have we gotten any paintings lately, or expecting any, or?
Everything, uh, I believe everything with the fire trucks has been paid out, that's the only thing left on, uh, the twenty-eighteen FEMA. Sounds like we may have to go fight for that one a little bit, but, um, we haven't really met with the state on that one yet, so it's, that's the next step, though.
Okay.
Um, as far as this year's, um, damage inventory is nearly complete, um, they did their inspections, and they had some estimates done, I think they met with me Monday of last week. Um, we went through that, um, followed them around for half a day, and the rest of it is, I had to gather some invoices and, um, hours for, you know, time that we've already done some repairs throughout the summer of the areas that couldn't wait till they inspected, and they have the, the estimates on that, but I just gotta get some invoices, uh, to back the estimates, so, so that's kind of where that one's at right now.
You've got the, the twenty-nineteen stuff under control, and all that's left is the fire trucks from the old stuff?
The twenty-eighteen?
Twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, twenty-eighteen, that's, that's it, it's the trucks, that's all that's left.
Everything else, take care. And you, you're aware of everything, and you can handle the rest of it?
Yeah, I'm, I pretty much, um, Chris kind of passed everything for twenty-nineteen on to me, so I've been working on that.
And I just bring it up, do we still need to keep him on the payroll, then, or?
He actually, he actually hung it up, um, I'm gonna have to go.
Okay. All right.
Is there more than that? Are we gonna have, but are we gonna have to go?
Okay, that was my-
He said I could still call him for, if he had any questions, but he's off the payroll
All right, anything else for Sean? Or Shane? Jeez, it's on Monday, why do we do these on Mondays?
Do them Wednesday morning at six.
Okay, let's stay with Monday. All right, thank you. That's it for department, did I miss anybody? Gold Bond Series twenty-nineteen E pricing?
The pricing committee met, and we're at, um, two point one-five percent, or two point one-four nine-nine-nine percent, if you want to be, um, technical with it, but, um, with, with US Bank, we have a resolution to go with that, under twelve A. If you have any questions on that.
That included the money for the tractor? I'd make a motion then to approve a resolution, twenty-nineteen sixty-six for the general operation launch.
First and second, any questions or discussion? One vote.
You tell?
Aye.
Jerry Schoens?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Dave Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution twenty-nineteen sixty-six, Tracy Go is ratifying resolution is, um, approved.
Hi. Hello. I'm Eric, some of you have met me before, some of you have not.
Thank you.
Give some cards up, nice to meet you.
Eric.
Nice to meet you. Did everybody get a copy of the proposal, or I have extra, if you might need a copy?
Can I get a copy, too?
Sure. All right.
Tony, it's not in the packet, I sent it to you separate.
Okay, can I get a copy, then?
Save you from looking.
Yeah, gotta be in here somewhere.
Oh, I'll take a colored one, if we got a colored one.
You like colors. Thank you.
So if you've already been able to look at it, I do always like to, um, present what each of the, each of the items means, talk a little bit about, um, the purpose. So obviously, in, in eleven point nine, looking to change, um, essentially both the, the accrual, um, and the, um, and the rollover, allowing for, for eighty hours of, of accrual, and for, for sixty hours of, of rollover. That is a relatively common, um, number, it's certainly not out of line with other, um, with other, other county entities and other municipality entities in, in the area, so, um, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and then in sick leave, fifteen point six, uh, just upping those, uh, the, the percentages of, of reimbursement for, for sick leave, uh, to, from forty to fifty percent, and, um, in, in, and then from fifty to, to sixty-five percent. Again, this is just sort of a, a, a way to retain, retain employees. I don't think this entity has had, um, such a problem with that, but it's always, especially in a, a tight labor market, uh, making sure you hold on to, to employees is, is, is key. And then in fifteen point one-three, this is maybe the most drastic change, uh, within the contract that we're proposing, um, and it's actually language that Southwest Health and Human Services adopted, uh, within the last, uh, a couple of years, um, and, and sort of the rationale behind it is, is, you know, um, we keep sort of adding different names and titles of, of, of people, and expanding, and expanding, and expanding, um, who, uh, who applies for, for funeral leave, that we, um, at least in, at Southwest- that we, at least at Southwest Health and Human Services, had decided that, hey, why don't we just make it that, you know, for, for a certain amount of time? It's just for, really for just about anybody. And, you know, I, I don't know that there's really any evidence, since we adopted it, that anybody has abused it. I don't think that people typically abuse funeral leave. You know, certainly not the, the employees here in Tracy. So it would allow for 24 hours of non cumulative, so it wouldn't rollover. It's just, you know, per year annual funeral leave. It does then allow for some additional amounts for immediate family, for parent, child, spouse. You know, it, and then just sort of has some, some other stuff where, you know, if they, if you exhaust that non cumulative bereavement leave, which means you're probably having a really bad year, if you, if you somehow exhaust that, that they can use another three days of sick leave for, for funerals of parents, children, spouse, and so on. And so it really just, you know, makes it a little more open as to, so that we don't have to think that, oh, well, we, we missed this title, or I, you know, you know, my, it's my step grandparent, and they, you know, and they're more important actually to me than my grandparent. And so it's, it's sort of just a way to get away from listing every single title that may or may not be important to us. And then in Article 26, the uniform allowance, raising that from $350 to $450 as, as we, you know, as folks, you know, the cost of, of things goes up. You know, and then just a couple of tiny changes on the shirts, just deleting the language that makes it so it has to be with city logo. And then just redefining bibs as bib overalls, sort of a fairly minor, a minor thing. And then also adding, and there's lots of discussion about, especially those folks in the office of perhaps adding some clothing with, with city logo in that instance for, for, you know, to, you know, for them, and, and sort of a, a clothing allowance on that. And then if you flip it over, 26.2 is just the, is the same as, as 26.1. It's just making sure that it says the same. And then in wages, looking for a general wage adjustment, first of all, for a three-year contract. I guess we're, we're still, I know in the past, the, the city has, has been more interested in two-year contracts. We continue to be interested in a three-year contract. And we would propose an increase to, to the wage, excuse me, the wage scale of 5% in 2020, 5% in 2021, and 5% in 2022.
Does anybody have any questions?
So do we just kind of go item by item here?
Typically, I will tell you, I'll be honest with you, this is the, this is the most atypical format that I have.
Thank you, because I counsel.
That I've had for negotiations. Typically, the, the city council or the entity will appoint a couple of people, you know, give them some, give them some direction, and we'll have these during the day or even in the evening. And, you know, obviously then, you know, if we reach a tentative agreement, it has to go back and be, and be voted on. This is sort of the arrangement that has been pushed for. And, and so, I mean, I guess we would, we would love to sit and have actual negotiations. So, I mean, typically, it would be where the, your side or the employer's side would caucus and, and come back with some sort of, some sort of counter. And, and so that we could go back and forth and have some, some discussion and some negotiation.
When did we get this?
Or, or.
It's a. Why did it take so long to get this to us? To even set up a negotiation?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
When did, when did you have this information all put together?
The Wednesday before.
Wednesday?
Before.
Yeah.
I mean, we, the, the process goes that these guys talk and develop proposals, and then, and then we come to you to negotiate. So I don't, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why.
Because I think we're gonna need to have time to go through all this, too.
Yeah, we're gonna have to discuss this.
Right, and that's what sort of having a caucus is, is for.
So we'll probably have to do a closed meeting for this, so we can go through this ourselves and see how it goes budget-wise and.
Or we can appoint a committee of two, and you would be willing to?
You're, you're.
Well, we can't do three, because that's a form. But we could do two, and you would be open to a committee of two sitting down?
Do three with Shane, because Shane needs to be involved in this right now, he has the acting administrator, so.
Yep.
It, that's, yeah. But.
I just think if we do it as a full council, it's gonna take a lot longer, because we have to have closed meetings and stuff like that. What happened to when we had asked Shane to meet with you guys, you know, that we had asked it kind of like, he was gonna be our middle man versus a committee? That's not.
So that's not, that's probably even more atypical, because if, if Shane doesn't really have the power to negotiate and come to a tentative agreement that you would, that you would vote on, then, then really, you're not negotiating. You're really just, like, I'm giving Shane, right, I'm giving Shane the, the paper. He, you know, legitimately, if he's not been given, you know, the, the power to negotiate, he has to bring it to you. And then we're not really negotiating so much as handing back and forth.
Well, even, even a committee here won't have the power to agree. They'd have to bring it back to the group. We ran into this last time on the.
Well, every entity that I deal with gives those two people guidance on how to come to a tentative agreement. And then we come to a tentative agreement, and they take it back and they vote on it, and, and, you know. So, I mean, I, I'm not sure how.
Well, they, a committee can do a tentative, but it still has to come back to us to approve.
Yeah, it would have been the same thing with, with Shane.
Yeah.
You know, he would have had to bring it back to us, and we would make that decision. So I'm not seeing the difference.
Yeah, historically, the administrator did the negotiating. It wasn't until recently that the council members became part of the committee, a part of a committee, that was done. But I'm not sure the reason why.
The problem with the negotiations last time was that if, if you are presented with a tentative agreement, okay, your options are to vote it up or to vote it down. Last time, it was then turned into a counterproposal, okay? I mean, if it, a tentative agreement becomes something then that we vote on and that you vote on, okay? Whereas last time, it was we negotiated with the administrator, and then basically, the administrator came and negotiated with you. Or, I, I mean, I wasn't in the meeting, but, I mean, then you, so it became sort of a multi-level negotiation, right? Where, you know, if you assign a couple of people, right, and you say, okay, this is sort of our, your guidance, this is what you want, and then they can come to a tentative agreement, then they could bring it back to you, and, and you can vote on. I mean, the other option is we, I mean, we certainly could just go straight to mediation. You know, where, where even if you all were there, the mediator has the power to, to, to make it a closed meeting.
But we've had no opportunity to go through this at all anyhow, so it's like, jumping right to mediation seems to be a far-fetched to me. Because it's like, we haven't even had a chance to discuss.
I understand what you're, you're looking for, a cleaner process. Okay? I get that.
Yeah. And we.
We haven't had a chance to review this, so we're going to have to do that.
Sure.
Either way we go, and whether we have Shane or appoint two people, or the three people and Shane, no matter how we do this, we need time to go over this document.
Sure.
And, and I understand your desire for a cleaner process. I think that benefits everyone, so that we're not dragging this out, and it's getting, you know, convoluted, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, I think you're absolutely right, that, you know, if, you know, if, if the people that we sit across from have that power to, to come to some sort of tentative agreement, then, then that would be, that would be awesome. And certainly, you know, if you need to, if tonight just needs to be us giving you the proposal, and then you appoint the two people and, you know, give them guidance, and then we, you know, pick a date and, you know, and.
How we're gonna move forward would be discussed in that closed meeting as well.
Okay.
So I think that's what we need to do, is, is we need to have a meeting and discuss what your proposal. And we'll also discuss how we're gonna move forward and, and interface with you on this, with the understanding that, you know, your, your desire is for a cleaner process than last time. And, and I would agree with you, and I think that's the best way for us to go. But we're certainly gonna need time to, to go over this and decide which way we want to go.
Okay.
Can we schedule a closed meeting after this meeting?
Can we schedule a date in which you'll, in which we can negotiate next? I mean, you can discuss how that, you know, who's going to be there.
Well.
I mean, is, I mean, are we, are we able to even?
I don't know if we could even go to close, because we didn't add it to the agenda, so we wouldn't be able to act on anything until after.
So it would be, what, the 11th?
12th.
Or the 12th?
Won't have a meeting on the 12th.
11th is Veterans Day. So it'd be the 12th.
But we could set up a meeting with you then, knowing we're gonna meet on the 12th.
Yeah, on the 12th after that, yeah.
You shortly right after the 12th, so it doesn't.
I hope so.
Break out.
Yeah.
Yep. So what's a good day for? And this is where we run into everybody getting.
Six o'clock at noon.
Six o'clock in the morning, yeah.
Right before the evening meeting.
So.
What is your schedule, Eric? How, how do you need to be available?
What I typically tell people is, is, is if you are scheduling something with me a couple of weeks out, or even three weeks out, then my schedule is usually very open. My schedule starts to really fill up like a week before, you know, and so my schedule is, is very, really, really varies from, from week to week. But that's probably the best way to describe it, is that if you, if you, if it's a couple of weeks out.
We're looking at the 13th, 14th, 15th, that time in there. What's your availability?
I would say the 14th or 15th is, is wide open. Afternoon on the 15th.
Doesn't work, or does work?
Doesn't work. Afternoon on the 15th works great. For clean.
Or the 14th. Or the 14th is.
In the afternoon.
All day.
All day on the 14th.
What is planned on that?
Get on the 14th?
Yeah.
Dave, you get on the 14th? Nope.
But it's not gonna be the full council anyways.
No. It'll be the committee.
It'll have to be the committee, so.
We can set that up.
When we have a closed meeting on the 12th, we can decide then.
We'll decide how we're gonna move forward and, and, but I want to make sure what our availability is, so we keep our options at maximum. Are you available? Should be.
I should be.
Okay. So let's tentatively set that for the 14th. Is that good?
Just we won't know the time right away.
Yeah, like, like six o'clock at night? Can we do that? Is that good with?
We do it in the afternoon, depends on whatever your schedule is, but.
We'll tentatively schedule for, for that, and then we'll firm it up as it gets closer. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
So we will schedule the closed meeting on the 12th. All right, anybody got any questions or anything to add?
Any initial questions about the, the proposal?
No, you answered my one question. I was just a little confused about the 26.2, because it was kind of redundant of 26.1, so.
Yeah, yeah, so sometimes those, those numbers get placed in a couple of different places in the contract. And if you're gonna change one, you gotta change them all.
Nope, that was my question, so.
All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lions Club requests a waived fee for use of MPC. So according to the application, they're gonna be doing food boxes?
Yeah, they do a soup dinner, one of the prey lights, and they package food boxes.
It's a yearly thing, they do this every year.
Sure. I don't have a problem with that. Anybody else?
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Let's go ahead and vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Lions Club request is approved.
Make a motion to request a closed meeting for liquor store managers' wage negotiation.
Okay. First and second, discussion or questions? Vote.
Patel.
Aye.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. So we will have a closed meeting at the end of this one. That is approved. Resolution 201967, pay.
Pay app number one.
App number one. To Dunick for work completed on phase 3A. That's infrastructure improvement on Harvey and Third.
Yeah, it actually should be Emory. It's actually just phase 3A1 is what it should be. They haven't done any work on Harvey yet. I don't know where that came from.
It came off the resolution, I think, or the payout. Came from somewhere, I didn't make it up.
Shane, do you want to change order? Which far?
Should be on there. Change order.
4870.
That'll be phase 3A2.
Don't they normally present their change orders before they present the payout request?
It's usually in a separate change order.
Yeah. It's kind of sneaky, but.
We're changing the amount, and here's what you owe us.
Right. Pay up.
Well, you're looking at that one, just go ahead and look at the same calendar.
Sure, we could do that. Municipal accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable with.
Hey, any idea what the 4850?
Without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Hill and the municipal account receivable report.
Looking. First and second, any discussion or question? Go ahead and vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Demers?
Aye.
So, without breakthrough beverage and Sanford Health and municipal accounts receivable?
Yep.
Is approved?
Make a motion to approve breakthrough beverage.
Second.
First and second, discussion? Go to vote.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Muttel?
Aye.
Jerry Shuns?
Aye.
Mayor Demers?
Aye.
Breakthrough beverage is approved, Sanford Health?
Make a motion to approve breakthrough Sanford Health.
First and second, questions or discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Muttel?
Aye.
Mayor Demers?
All right, Sanford Health is approved. What'd you learn?
So, apparently, there was a change order a few months ago, um, as for swapping the sidewalk on Hollis Street between Center and Second, from one side to the other, to make it match.
Oh, that one, okay.
All right. Remember that.
So, they did do it right?
Just a long time ago.
Yeah. They threw it in there for, okay. Well, that'd be identified, I'd make a motion to approve, like, resolution 201967 to Dunick.
Second.
First and second, um, so, is the resolution itself correct? Is this just a typo in the agenda?
It matches, so...
It matches the, the payout that they said. So, if you look at the page right after the resolution on your agenda packet...
I mean, they're both part of the project, so...
Yeah, but they haven't done any work there yet. So...
It's, but it's paid under the, the phase 3A infrastructure improvement?
In the project name.
The project name is right. That encompasses Harvey and Third Street as part of that project. It's not necessarily what work done on Harvey Street. It's the title of the project.
It's just what they named it.
Yep.
But, I mean, the title is misleading.
That is.
At, at best.
As long as they match, we know what we're doing, so...
It's helpful.
You'll call me again.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for, this says 3A, doesn't say anything about 3A1, and it says specifically for Harvey Third Street. And this is a legal document, is it not?
Cause payouts are based on quantities. It's not really part.
Yep.
I don't think it's an issue, but...
Okay, well, if you guys don't think it's an issue, that's...
But I'll make sure before we give it the final blessing. Hey, again, so on the payout number one, um, phase 3A, it says Harvey Third. All right, that's all I need for now. All right, thanks. All right, so it's part of the PFA grant that, um, we have applied through the state. Um, they require all projects to be designated by an intersection, so in this case, um, Harvey and Third was for phase, for phase 3A, which is now phase 3A1. Um, I'll note that, too, um, that this is for phase 3A1, um, on the resolution. I'll have them make that correction, but, um, so then phase, original phase B, which is now phase 3A2, um, they reference that intersection off Harvey and Sixth, so, and it's just gonna keep...
Yep.
So, and so it's more of a, like a landmark, it's more than...
Even though we haven't done any work there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another state requirement.
Makes sense.
Well, I just wanna make sure we got our ducks in a row and we're not approving something we shouldn't be approving.
Um, once they do this payout, then we'll be eligible to get our four to $500,000 that we've paid out in fees on phase 3A and 3B, which is now phase 3A1 and 3A2. So, um...
Clear as mud, man.
It'll help up the count a little bit, so...
Okay. So, you're gonna make that correction on the resolution?
Yeah, I'll have them make sure they correct that. I know they corrected on most of their other publications, but...
So, you can't sign it tonight, then?
Um, I would say we should just get the approval to do it, based on those corrections, and then I'll have them correct it.
Okay, and we don't sign it until...
Cause if we don't sign it, then that's gonna delay us getting paid till November, after November, as well.
My resolution is wrong, then?
So, what's that?
My resolution is wrong, then? How can we have them sign it if it's not right?
Well, if we put the correction in there, he'll just sign it later, is what I'm saying.
If we approve the resolution...
With the correction.
The corrections, then he can sign the corrections.
Yep.
Later.
Later, because it's already been approved.
So that we can get it in for...
So, we just won't have it on paper?
Tonight.
Tonight.
No.
But it, it'll be on record as...
Well, Ken, if you wanna give me one second, run upstairs and make the change.
Well, you can, while we go into closed meeting.
While we go into closed, yeah.
Then I can leave it in the office, if you wanna grab it and have him sign it.
You slide it under the door.
Yeah, do that, 'cause I...
Okay.
All right.
So, I'll amend my motion then to, to the fact that we approve the corrected resolution.
Second.
First and second, any more discussion or questions?
I guess just note that it's phase 3A1 would be the correction.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
Shuns?
Aye.
Teaks?
Aye.
Muttel?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Demers?
Aye.
Resolution 201967, the payout one to Dunick for work completed on phase 3A1, infrastructure improvement at Harvey and Third is approved based on corrections. Or pending corrections, or however we wanna put that. Okay. Unfinished business, the City Administrator Applications Committee.
Put that on there to see, um, I mean, based on the discussion at the last meeting, um, if they wanna have a, like, a hiring committee, I guess there would be time to table it if you wanna think about it further, but, like, 15th, it's a deadline for the next round, so...
Have we received any apps yet?
Um, four or five, maybe?
Yeah, I'm good with tabling that for now. Anybody else? Will you get closer?
We're not gonna do anything till after the next meeting anyways.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and table that one. Mayor and Council Communication. Okay, I got one thing I wanna just kinda throw out there. It's an idea, wanna run it by y'all. I think, you know, we have talked about, we're a small town and the advantages of being in a small town, um, and given recent events, and I talked with Chris about this a while back, but we got involved in other things. I think it would be nice if the city could extend, um, condolence card to the family of the citizens here that have passed. Um, I don't, I have no facts for you at this time, as far as cost or anything else, but I would kinda like to look into that and, and maybe start that as a matter of policy with the city, that, um, you know, we gather our information from the newspaper, from local funeral homes or whatever, um, and just a simple card to acknowledge their loss and, and extend the condolences of the city. What do y'all think of that?
My main concern with that would be that we miss somebody and then offend somebody because of that, because you're talking a large community.
Well, and how many people?
I mean, if you think 2,200 people, I mean, how do we know for sure we, cause not everybody puts something in the paper. It's not required that are obituary. I think that a death notice or something is required, isn't it?
It's to the family.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, and I would think in that, in that, and, and it's something that we would have to discuss, but it, just briefly, I would think in that instance, if the family doesn't put something in the paper or make it, you know, some type of obit or make it public, then, you know, it's probably not something we should be doing if they don't desire it to be public. But they make the information public, I think maybe we should acknowledge that.
But then where do we draw the line, too?
The first...
So, somebody's lived here for 60 years, and then their last 20 years of their lives, they moved away to, so where we gonna send out a card, then?
Well, if the family contacts Tracy to say, hey, you know, we're, we're running obit in the paper, I mean, these are all things that could be discussed if, if we wanted to move forward, but...
The first thing I'd do is check and see if that's an allowable expenditure of tax, tax money.
Yeah.
And if it is, then you can discuss it. If it isn't, then it's dead.
Right, absolutely, but, but I wanted to kinda get a consensus of the council on, you know, looking into it at all, and how you felt about doing that, so... It can't be that expensive, at 52 cents a card or whatever, or, you know, the postage or...
You wouldn't think, but...
Well, it would have to be investigated, and that's, I just wanted to...
And then you assign that duty to somebody, so you're paying their wage while they're doing it, and, I mean, there's...
You can volunteer.
I understand what you're saying, but, uh, so, I mean, we don't need to...
Decide now.
Yeah, I just...
Like Tony said, we need to find out if it's even...
I mean, it's kinda money, you know?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's cool. All right, anything else?
Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting, so we can enter a closed session.
Second.
We don't actually close, do we?
I'm sorry.
Close the public portion, then you open it, close it, then you go back.
Right, right, yeah, I'm thinking the, the other word, the A-word. All right, so at this time, we're gonna close the public portion of the normal council meeting and...
Better vote first.
Vote.
To adjourn.
To adjourn, well, we're...
Close the meeting.
Okay, go ahead. Freakin' Monday.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Muttel?
Aye.
Shuns?
Aye.
Mayor Demers?
Aye.
So, at this time, we'll close the...
Public portion.
Public portion and we'll...
Recede for five minutes.
Recede for five minutes.
Not gonna give you enough time to run upstairs.